Good evening, I'm going to open up the workshop session of the City Council. City manager's report on issues raised at prior meetings.
Not at this time.
So we'll go right to presentations by transportation planner Michael Manzal regarding the city of Asbury Park for working and biking by WSP and NJDOT.
Good evening, members of the council. We are here, I'm here tonight with NJDOT's consultant, WSP. This is Pete Kramer and Mike Kublenoff, and they are the consultant who have been working on the master plan for bicycling and walking in Asbury Park. As you're all aware, we were awarded a local technical assistance grant back in mid 2017 to begin work on a master plan for bicycling and walking in the city. We are at the point now where we have a final draft of the plan, and after this evening's presentation to the council, the next step is we're going to open it up to public feedback. We have the final draft plan posted on our website with a feedback form. We're going to accept public comments until January 11th, and then following that, the adoption of this plan will be done through the planning board as what we would like to do is have this be an element of the circulation plan, of the master plan. So that's an official document the city can follow now and in the future. So we anticipate that the adoption of the plan will happen before the planning board, sometime in early 2019, probably February or March. So with that, I'll pass it over to Pete, and I'll actually hand out some copies of the final draft for you all to look at.
Okay, well, thank you very much for having us. I know you guys are busy, so we're just going to give you a quick overview of our study. As Mike said, this is funded by a grant from the New Jersey Department of Transportation. We do these types of bicycle and pedestrian master plans for municipalities across the state. We've worked in Highland Park, Princeton, Haddonfield, a lot of towns across New Jersey. So we're just going to kind of give you a quick overview of what we've done, and then my colleague, Mike Kublenoff, is going to give you just a couple of quick highlights of places where there'll be improvements that have been recommended, and you can kind of take a look at the town, that's the way it looks right now, and see what, how these improvements fit into what's going on here. So Asbury, a lot of great things, I've been coming here for a long time, a lot of great things are happening in town right now, so really this is the perfect time for this kind of plan, and it's designed to fit right into your capital improvement process. Ideally, a lot of the things that we're recommending can be done when a road is repaved. So when you mill out the old asphalt from an existing roadway, a lot of these improvements can just be done with striping and paint and just improved crosswalks, that kind of thing. So typically what we do is we have a very robust community engagement process, and I'll just say first, we've been working with Mike very closely and your planning department for about a year and a half, that's kind of the term of this study. We have a kind of a robust engagement process, we had a steering committee, members of the public, the business community, and even some, several members of your police force. We find that when the police are engaged in this type of plan, they understand that pedestrian safety and mobility are public safety issues, you know, it really goes a long way to making things better, because a lot of it is that drivers, pedestrians, and cyclists need to learn how to interact with each other, and when we have the correct kind of designs out on the roadway, it just makes, you know, a much, you know, safer community, and with all the tourism and the summer activity that you have here, it's exactly the kind of things that fit well into the kind of place that Asbury is coming. So we had our steering committee, we met with quite a few community members, we had a website, we had a survey, we had quite a lot of activities to get input from the public to identify what kind of place they want Asbury Park to be, what some deficiencies are, and what are some of the kind of improvements, excuse me, that they would like to see. We also look at the crash data, which is what, typically what people call accident data, it's official crash data from the Department of Transportation, helps us identify where some of the safety deficiencies are. We examine the street network, the sidewalk network, the crosswalks, where people are walking and biking from and going to, and, you know, typically around here, the restaurant, the downtown, the train, and the, you know, the boardwalk and the beach are where a lot of the biking and walking activity take place. And then we developed a series of improvements of where sidewalks are missing or they're in bad shape, where crosswalks could be enhanced or upgraded, traffic signal equipment can be updated, you know, a lot of the equipment that gets built over time, their new design standards come in over time, and the equipment has to be upgraded when a road is repaved and it's replaced. And then, so we have sidewalk improvements, crosswalk improvements, enhanced traffic signals, and then we have some bicycle and pedestrian improvements. And as I said, all these things are designed to fit right into your capital improvement process. So when a road X comes up for repaving, Mike can refer to the plan and say the plan says, "Well, this should have these types of improvements," and then he adds crosswalk and upgraded traffic signal equipment, pedestrian countdown timers, bike lanes, that sort of thing, and that gets folded right into the project, and that's the most cost-effective way to do those things. So what I'm going to do now is just turn it over to my colleague, Mike, and he's going to give you a couple of highlights of specific places where we've recommended improvements. And then if you guys have any questions, as Mike said, he's given you guys each a copy of the plan, and it'll be available for public comment as well, so we'll take your comments over the next month or so, do our final updates, and then Mike will come back for official adoption.
Good evening, my name is Mike, I'm with WSP Consulting Firm with Pete. So I worked on this project for about a year, year and a half. This is our final draft, just to give you a very quick rundown in terms of the recommendations, as Peter already discussed everything else, kind of, they fall under two types, bicycle network, pedestrian network. We discovered very quickly that Asbury Park's pedestrian network is really good, the sidewalk network is by and large complete. What we proposed for the pedestrian network, we picked a series of intersections, we called them priority intersections, places where there are some deficiencies with ADA or sidewalks, crosswalks, heavy traffic, and they can be templates for other intersections. So we don't have to look at every intersection in town, if you see, you know, Fourth and Memorial can get these improvements, you can go down the line on Memorial and really establish the same improvements. So we picked, I believe five or six, you will see in the plan, priority intersections, that's for the pedestrian network, for the bicycle network. Asbury Park is blessed with very wide roadways, a lot of times when we do these plans, our recommendations require quite a bit of, you know, it's not going to fit between the curves, you're going to have to do some long-term work. And Asbury Park, the vast majority of our recommendations only require really paint. So there's a lot of bang for your buck if you do pursue a bike network. In the plan, we identified priority corridors where we think would be the best bang for your buck, return on investment with bicycle facilities. The busier roadways, you kind of want to separate bicyclists from traffic, you know, very few people want to ride their bike alongside fast-moving, high-volume roadways. Other roadways, you don't need, you know, expensive fancy bike facilities, you just maybe some striping, maybe a little bit of traffic calming, things like that. So in the plan, you will see, we, just like on the board over there, you'll see that map in here, that's basically the whole network we propose. It builds on the work that Asbury Park's already doing, which is, you know, every time we're here, there's something new going on. Main Street and all the other, Sunset Ave, Fourth Ave, so building on those, with relatively little effort, you can have a pretty good bike network. We noticed that, I think, Fourth Ave and a lot of other roads in town have the exact same cross-section, I believe it's 48 feet, so you could almost, it's like a template, you can do it on one street, you could do it on the next, on the next, as you see fit. You know, not every road needs to have bike lanes, but we spell it out here in the plan for you. We worked in the community quite a bit for this plan, we talked to the public at Blue Bishop at Asbury Night Out, we also did two focus groups, the business community and the advocate community, just to get their input, what, you know, what they see fit, what they think should and shouldn't be done. So this effort is not just us coming up with ideas, it's your own community giving us input. So if you have any, Mike, I think Mike will be submitting the report pretty soon after the final comments, and feel free to reach out to us with any concerns, and we could always address them in the plan.
So you want us to read this and make comments?
You can. So it's now live on the city's website, under asburypark.com/bikepedplan. You can, anyone can read the final report, and there's actually a comment submission form for them to submit comments. So we're looking for public comments by January 11th, and then we'll move on to adoption by the planning board.
All right, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Move to a review of agenda items for this evening's meeting.
Resolution 2018-413 is setting the dates for 2019. 414 is to terminate a sewer count and cancel open charges for 612 Sixth Avenue. 415 and 416 is disposition of surplus property, 415 is property that has no value and we're just going to throw out because it's incredibly broken.
Before we throw it away, can we offer to donate to somebody?
It's broke, like pieces are in multiple, like, as a printer, in three parts.
24-foot extension aluminum ladders are broken?
That one we're giving away to...
That's why I'm asking, can we give them to somebody before we throw them away?
Yeah, anything that, but most of this stuff is just garbage.
The only ones I'm talking about are the two 24-foot ladders and two 16-foot ladders. If the Historical Society or somebody else wanted them, they'd take them at their cost at no risk.
Okay. The ladders aren't going somewhere, I just don't remember where they're going, but everything else is just broken. Resolution 417 is...
416, then we donate those to maybe the Haitian church and they can send them to Haiti.
Which one?
The 23 turnout coats, the 23 turnout pants, what?
If you read the resolutions, they're already being donated.
To who?
The 9/11 Fund?
Yeah, it's called the 9/11 Fund.
Who's the 9/11?
It's a nonprofit that gives old fireflyer equipment to third-world countries.
Okay, well, that's why I wanted to talk. Okay.
418 is, I'm sorry, 417 is authorizing a sustainable New Jersey grant application roots for rivers reforestation, grant and technical assistance. 418 is to amending a resolution, it just changes the amount of money that we've already received. 419 is the...
Received and spent?
Yes. It's a reimbursement grant. 419 is accepting money for the drunk driving enforcement fund, this pays for officers to do drunk driving enforcement. 420 is accepting the JAG grant, which is a trailer. 421 authorizes the acceptance of the grant and putting it into the budget, as same thing as 422. Technically, you have to be awarded the grant, and then we put it into the budget by a special line item. Moving on to individual resolutions, transferring of appropriations is 423, 424 is the payment of bills, 425 is the continued security improvements throughout City Hall, 426, we've been asked by the court for credit and debit card payments, this authorizes that. 427 and 428 are the change orders that will close out those two projects. 429 is a change order that closes out the road program project. 430 authorizes the city manager to sign the indemnification agreement as we work through the process of opening Fisherman's Lot in the surrounding area, and 431 is permitting a perimeter fence at the Michael's Group project site, the Renaissance Village. Is there any questions on individual resolutions?
Yeah, 425, I was asked by numerous of people, what type of security we have, can you explain that first?
I'd rather not get into too much detail of it, but it's the card key system that we've been deploying throughout City Hall, and then a couple other security measures, which I don't want to state publicly for obvious reasons, but a lot of it is the card system, the little black swipes you see throughout the doors. And we've been improving some of the doors that have been broken for a little while. Anything else? Moving on to ordinances for introduction, 2018-54, I believe Mr. Manzal can answer any questions on that one if needed. Is there any questions on that introduction? Ordinance 2018-55 is establishing the salary range for employees of the Asbury Park College Library. This is the standard, as we audit people and they move up in salary via contracts, sometimes they'll get above what the ordinance is, so we're making sure that we're in compliance with that. Resolution 2018-56 is the unnamed alley located east of Dunlue Street. This has been something we've been working on for probably two or three years now. There's a small part of the property that the city owns that we have absolutely no use for, so we like to vacate it to the adjoining neighbors. And 2018-57 is the bond ordinance for the acquisition and construction of the firehouse. Earlier today, the mayor, myself, and Chief Caddy were at the local finance board. Before you introduce this ordinance tonight, there is a statement that has to be read by the city clerk. I'm going to read it now so you get a heads up of it. "The city appeared before the local finance board today, and the board asked us to amend the introduced bond ordinance to reflect their approval of a down payment waiver upon a $33.5 million bond ordinance, as opposed to the $20 million bond ordinance that was originally introduced. Accordingly, this change in dollar amount is deemed to be a substantial amendment to the bond ordinance and requires approval of the amendment and the amended bond ordinance." And then Cindy will ask for the motions to amend the ordinance.
Are we amending, I'm sorry, are we amending the other ordinance? Because I had that actually withdrawn, the other ordinance, and having this...
The county wants it withdrawn?
Yeah.
Okay, then that'll be the process.
Okay, yeah, that's just the way, that's why it has a new number and everything, so I figured we would draw the one, so it's cleaner.
That's fine.
Okay. So do I start to do that statement?
No, I don't know why you sent it then.
Okay.
So the local finance board today, as you know, we had asked for a waiver of down payment. Under the local bond law, the municipalities and other entities are required to have a 5% down payment. We were looking not to do that because we didn't think it was valid for the project that we were doing, this is vital for health, safety, and welfare of the community, and we also don't want it to further burden the residents as we go through the future years of the school district and losing $28 million and eighty. And the local finance board was very receptive to the project, they're thankful that we're actually doing this, but they just wanted to make sure that we were judicious in how we do this and wanted to do it piece by piece. So they asked, they authorized the three and a half million, which should cover acquisition and first phase any environmental cleanup. Ordinance 2018-51 is handicap parking. 52 is handicap parking, and 53 is terms of licensing and renewal in Chapter 4, which is general licensing. There's no ordinances for second reading tonight? I'm sorry, that is second, second reading. 2018-21 is Chapter 2, Section 88, development fees to the code of the city of Asbury Park. We're going to ask to table that to the final meeting of the year. 2018-39 is various articles in the code of the city of Asbury Park, just table that till the end of the year, please. 2018-50 is the bond ordinance, which I just explained. 2051, 52, and 50, 2051 and 52 are the handicap parking, and 53 is the general licensing. Those are on for second reading. That's all.
All right, at this time, we have matters by council.
Okay, so I just want to remind everyone that Saturday, December 22nd, and Tuesday, December 25th, and Tuesday, January 1st are the, oh, December 15th too, are the last free parking days, and then I just want to wish everyone a very happy and merry holiday season, whatever it is you celebrate. I hope you enjoy yourselves and celebrate with friends and family.
The city of Asbury Park is selling gift certificates for seasonal beach passes. So if you're interested, they can be purchased in the City Hall lobby on Friday, December 14th and 21st, and on Saturdays, December 15th and 22nd, and the hours are Fridays 3:00 to 5:00, Saturdays 10:00 to 1:00. And the purchase prices remain the same as they were last summer. And the city of Asbury Park and the Quality of Life Committee are having a coat, food, gloves giveaway on December, I'm sorry, January 12th. It will be in the Transportation Center, and they will, we will be accepting donations on the second floor of City Hall the prior week. So if you have gently used or new item, please, we would really appreciate your donating for those of us who are less fortunate. And on this Friday evening at St. Stephen's AMV Church on the corner of Springwood and Prospect Avenue is an expungement session, and it starts at 7:00 PM. And happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, and happy Hanukkah, everything. I just hope you enjoy the holiday season and your families.
I just want to wish everyone a happy holiday and a safe holiday. Don't eat too much, we look forward to seeing you next year, and stay blessed.
So I'm sure many of you know the city is requesting information on vision of the North End Boardwalk, the two ways you can do that, or there's copies in the reception area, and on our website, there is a form for you to fill out, the deadline for you to do that is December 23rd, so we're asking everybody to fill out that form, give us your thoughts and concerns on the North End. And even though this isn't city-related, I wanted to do a big congratulations to Eileen, who threw a really, really amazing show over the weekend and had 45, right, an amazing show that got 45-ish artists on there and kept me out certainly past any time that I normally am out for, so kudos to you on...
Thank you, and it raised money for four charities within the city. The Asbury Music Foundation, the Boys and Girls Club, the Jewish Children of Family Services, and the Asbury Park Toy Drive.
Fantastic. That's it. Just a Merry Christmas or Happy Holiday, whatever you celebrate to everybody, thank you.
Matters by the city manager?
Not at this time.
Matters by the city attorney?
Nothing at this time.
We will break until 7 o'clock. Good evening, I'm going to call to order the Asbury Park City Council council meeting. Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
President.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Please rise for a silent prayer, moment of reflection, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and just for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 3, 231 Public Law, 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 4, 2018, and posted on a bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. At this time, we'll move to public participation, have a motion to open the meeting to the public, please.
Move it.
Any member who wishes to speak, please come up to the mic in the middle of the room, state your name and address for the record, please. Each member has three minutes to speak.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Louise Murray, 1604 Grand Avenue, Asbury Park. Of course, Asbury Park. Last week, it was a very, very emotional meeting, and I fully understand the hurt, the crying, it had to go to your heart. However, I am very disappointed in some of our council members, I mean, they know who they are. There was the chief of police or whatever lieutenant, whatever he was, he was standing over there in his white shirt, and he was asked to be removed because he made it uncomfortable for the rest of the audience. Since when do we have to get into the minds and the hearts of other people? This man worked hard for that white shirt, his promotion or whatever. All council meetings are represented by our police department. This is a given. We have it here, we respect him, and I found it, when I found out it to be true, I found it totally appalling. The council has got to understand what their job is, and it's certainly not to have a member of our police force removed because they think they're, he's making it uncomfortable for the rest of the audience. For that matter, there shouldn't be any police here if somebody's uncomfortable. Something needs to be done, just recognize what your job is. I was sitting there, I know what my job used to be. Now, on to nicer things, they had the coffee today, which I missed, I thought, I think that was a wonderful idea to have coffee with your policeman. And the other thing is, thank you for Johnny Mac, for all the Christmas decorations, I think it does something for the city of Asbury Park, because lord only knows, we certainly need a little festivities around City Hall. And I have one other thing, what was it, Rita? Oh. We were talking about it on the way over. Grand Avenue definitely needs to have a light on there. The other morning, I was coming home from church, early in the morning, car was going up Grand about 40 miles an hour, you know, when they go fast, you can't spot them that quickly, but I managed to stop after this big SUV got in front of me. Had I hit him, which I didn't, I would have gotten him on the tail end. This gentleman gets out of the car, he's like a linebacker, he's six foot three, if he's an inch, he's got to be close to 300 pounds, he comes over to me, I roll my window down, and he starts, ah, the language, I just came from mess, and I'm going, wait a minute, wait a minute, what is wrong with you? I didn't even hit you, I didn't touch you, what's going on? MFing me all over the place, and I didn't even have my phone with me. I mean, Grand Avenue needs to be assessed, I mean, truly, because they come from D.O. Lake Drive and they go, "Thank you."
Hi, Linda Phillips, 400 D.O. Lake Drive. I just had a question about on this 430 authorization of indemnification agreement. I'm assuming that is the thing about giving I-STAR, they don't have to worry about people getting hurt down at the end of the boardwalk, is that what that one's about? So my question is, is it, once that's signed, is there part of that beach going to be opened up again, or the parking lot, or some part towards the dog park going to be opened up a little bit for people to get on there at that point? And then is it the city that's going to do that, or is I-STAR, how's that going to happen? Will it happen soon? Those are my questions.
Is Michael there? Yeah.
Yes, we're waiting for a report from our insurance company, they reviewed the area on Monday, to see what we can and can't do to protect everyone who goes there. Once that gets done, we give it to I-STAR. I've been drafting the indemnification agreement, and then we open up everything. We just want to make sure everything is...
All right, so that's going to happen sooner rather than like a couple weeks?
We're pushing to get it done, I emailed the insurance company about an hour ago.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good evening, my name's Arthur Schlossback, I live at 1043 Summerfield Avenue. First question is to the city manager, when do I get my $13.63 back? That would be from after American Water stole $75 million from their customers in July and got caught. I just got my bill, I got my $13.63 back that they took from me, which means everybody here that paid sewer bills got a 22% increase from July, on July of last year. And you got, you don't have to, you're not going to get it back, but you got to give it back to us, because we didn't use that sewer money. You've got a $100,000 hit, you should have known.
I'll have to...
You didn't know about this? You're like, your auditors didn't notice that in the July sewer bills, everything got bumped up like more than, it's 22%. It's a 22% increase on my bill. It's only $13, but what are you talking about, 5,000 houses here?
I'll ask the tax collector to get the report from American Water if he noticed any anomalies.
You didn't see this in the newspaper? Really?
We don't, it depends on what our...
I mean, it was a big thing, you know, they said they overcharged, and they made them pay it back with interest, and they did it in the month that is the highest usage month, figured no one would notice it, and they got caught. But, you know, we paid you and we didn't use your service, so I want it back. All right, number two, something that probably doesn't happen here too often in a city council, but when I worked in the city council in New York, it never happened, but I want to say something nice. I want to commend the board and the building departments and the city manager for the initiative of fixing up and the, making the landlords fix up their houses in the last year. houses in the last year. It's incredible, the amount, I mean, they nailed me for not having the zero in my 10-043 on my front porch, which is kind of petty, but, but I'm a C O P, which is the Asbury Park Police Department Citizen Patrol Unit, and what we do is we drive around and look. So I look at every house in this town at least three times every time I go on tour. And the difference, especially on the west side, is astronomical. I mean, everything's been fixed up. I had three houses right off my front porch that I guess they were boarded up for seven years. Two of them got sold already after they fixed it. So I want to commend you people on what you're doing. The only thing I'm worried about is a year from now, when everything's done, how are you going to pay those four officers? Are they going to start going around and giving tickets just to justify their salaries? All right. Third, when I lived in New York City, I was appointed to the community board. Community board's like a little city council in a district, downtown Manhattan. And we had committees. So I went to your meeting with the different committees, you have seventeen. That's nice. We only had ten and we had 300,000 more people, but one of them, oh, one was the landmarks committee and I think you should have a landmarks committee here. Then like St. James would have never got knocked down in 1970.
Thank you.
Hi. Ellen Muller, 1501 Ocean Avenue. I just had a question about the process for the boardwalk for development down by us. I know there's a comment section, but so far all I've seen published are some 2D plans without any clear dimensions. I haven't seen any axometrics or renderings. I know there's a technical review on Saturday, on what Friday it is. So I'm trying to understand the process because I'd like to be able to get more detailed information before I make a comment. Any ideas?
She's talking about the beach club. Where did she see?
Well, the boardwalk area, right? And the beach club?
The TRC's only dealing with their pool, their pool club.
Well, pool club, sorry.
Okay. The TRC and the Friday meetings are only about the pool club. Has nothing to do with the boardwalk.
But even on the boardwalk, we don't really, there, there's no detailed plan for us to-
Those plans are being drawn up and that's where we're going to have the meeting with the public sometime in January.
Yeah, but those plans are going to be based on feedback. So I think everybody knows the original plan was that the boardwalk was greatly reduced to, I'm going to say fifteen feet from like twenty-eight feet. I-STAR and the city are speaking and so we're not going to give you a plan. We would rather you give us comments.
Okay, so the comment, okay, the comment is not-
And then the idea is that we will take those comments and put those into plans and present them to the public to again take input and then come up with something-
So it is a suggestion level plan, not a comment on an existing-
Not a comment on an existing plan, correct.
Okay, that's what I just need to clarify.
Right. So we'll have some renderings though. We'll have some potential renderings-
Right.
And then allow people to make public comment based on those renderings and feedback.
Before the 23rd?
This should be like mid-January.
Okay, but the 23rd is just suggestions. That is not a comment based upon what are ultimately final plans. Great. Okay. Just wanted clarification on that. Thank you very much and a very happy holiday to everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Linda Leahy, Fifth Avenue, Asbury.
Move the microphone down.
I know, I don't want it to get loose like it did before. I have a couple of things. One of them is on Memorial Drive and also on Main Street, I want to know if they're going to put in arrows so that people can turn left without waiting for a whole line of cars to go by and then the light changes or the train comes and you can't turn anyway. I'm hoping that they'll put those in eventually. The other thing is when you're pulling out of Fifth Avenue onto Memorial, the parking there is so bad that you cannot see that way to the left if you're coming out of the street. I think they should either put stop signs on Memorial and let the people come out of there or they're going to have to do away with some of those parking spaces there. Because there was a truck parked there the other day and I couldn't see anything down the road. And then the last complaint is the blowers. This afternoon, I was working out in front of my house on Fifth Avenue and down at the, where the park is, there were two gardeners with blowers and they were probably there for almost an hour blowing all the leaves. And when I looked down the street, it looked like there was a fire because the whole street going to the other side was all, looked like smoke. They were blowing all those things that are on the road that are, cause cancer, some of them. They're blowing them all over the street into the road, the cars coming and the cars had to slow down because they couldn't see. So something has to be done and I've been harping about this for a while. Something has to be done about these blowers. They make too much noise and they make too much mess. And the thing is that they're blowing stuff out into the street when you're trying to drive by. So anyway, I think that's it. I'm trying to think of, I want to give you a compliment once in a while, but I'll do it next time.
Thank you.
I just always think of these things when I'm driving around. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Dwayne Small, former Charter Study Commission member. John, I called you a couple of days ago and asked you about this project over here. You know, when you ride by and you go over there at that project, the people from Asbury Park that's working on that project are only hired as labors. No skilled people are hired over there. One contract was given to a contractor here. One contractor here was told his numbers was too high. As a matter of fact, Yvonne, he called you and spoke to you about it, said the numbers was too high and you got back to me and then numbers changed. But when you look at the union working over there, whose numbers is higher than the unions? I know ours are not. And it's a Section 3 project. By law, each contractor that comes over there must hire people from this community. And everyone knows this. Michael knows this, John, you know it, Yvonne, you know it, Kendall, you know it. I don't know if you know it, Ms. Chapman, and he, and Ms. Quinn, you know it also. John, you mentioned about the park, about the contractor that got that contract. He was fined by the Department of Justice for visa fraud. You go look over there and you look around this city, like the man said, he come in, y'all, on these houses being fixed up, but who's fixing them up? And then not only that, who's moving into them? We're being denied housing now on the west side of town. Last time we was here was because of the police. We being denied jobs, grant money that was sent to this community because of the poverty that exists. The Section 3 program, the purpose is economic development in poor and disadvantaged communities. So why are outsiders allowed to come here and get all this money and we're kicked to the side? The housing authority has openly admitted that the contractor over there is in violation of Section 3 and nothing has been done. One guy was working over there, they hired him at twenty-six dollars an hour. Then they started not communicating with him on the job, speaking Spanish, not communicating with him. Next thing you know, a month later, his pay gets dropped down to thirteen dollars an hour. And officials are aware of this. Now, if y'all want to bridge this divide that exists, y'all have to attack the issues that affect the west side the same way y'all attack the issues over here. Remember that preacher? And rightfully so. No one should be able to come here and preach hate and no one should ever be able to come here and take our jobs away from us and kick us to the curb and y'all sit up there. That's what the purpose of the Charter Study Commission was for. And like the lady said to y'all before, people going to come after y'all, they going to continue to come after y'all if y'all not addressing our issues. So now the question, John, what are y'all going to do about it?
Thank you. Time's up.
I asked the question, what are y'all going to do about it? Each member of it, can y'all answer that question? Now, if y'all don't want to answer the question right now, say so, then we can answer that in the next meeting.
Okay, you'll get an answer before the next meeting. I told you I went over there that day and I looked at it and I talked to the City Manager about it and we believe the paperwork's in order.
Y'all believe it's in order? Okay, well, can we see?
Yes. Thank you. Your time's up.
Nicole Harris, 17 Ridge Avenue. So I've come here tonight to give you somewhat of an update, but also, so last time I was here, I explained what happened to my cousin on November 20th when he was pulled over for not having a light on his bike and as a result, he had injuries from the police officers. I know that this situation is currently under investigation, so there's a limit to the things that I guess I could say, so I don't want to say too much. However, Wednesday, the following day, the 21st, I did meet with police officers because I wanted to understand why my cousin came home looking the way he did with the injuries that he had and no one had sent him to the hospital, et cetera. And now I'm very concerned because as we go through this process of the investigation, I do commend the prosecutor's office. They have been very open with us and, and, and sitting with us and talking to us, but some things that were said to me on that Wednesday night do not line up. And so I'm talking to you because I think that you need to look into who is in our Internal Affairs Department here in Asbury Park because it's not only important that they be truthful with me as a resident here, but it'd be, it's important that they be truthful with you as the council. I'm sure that some of you have seen the, the force report for, that was on NJ.com, which stated that out of the somewhat like 470 police departments we have within the state of New Jersey, that Asbury Park's Police Department uses more force than about 360-something. That's a lot, especially for a town that is so small. And since this incident has happened, I've had a number of young people call me, inbox me, text me, email me to tell me that this has happened to them too. The only thing is unfortunately, they didn't have a family or a support system that is supporting them the way that we are supporting our family member. So I just wanted to let you know that because I feel like you should be aware of what's going on, right? So there's a young man named Brian who I'm trying to help right now because he also had five police officers around him after being told he didn't have a light on his bike a month before Raekwon. So we need to ask the question, how is it that these young people, particularly young black men in this city, have been going from having no light on their bike to resisting arrest? Where's the gap in between that nobody is talking about? So I would like to encourage you to kind of look into that because I think in the next couple of months, it's going to start peeking its head because we're starting to make noise about it. So how do you go from a fifteen dollar ticket to being arrested, handcuffed, and injured? So that's a question that you have to ask. It's certainly a question that I will continue to ask for the next couple of months, but I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Rita Morando, Eighth Avenue. The first thing I want to say is somebody better start listening to Dwayne because he rides around this town every day and he knows exactly what's going on. And it's a, he's been saying this for a couple of years now and it's getting worse. And before you know it, we're going to be a sanctuary city, which is something I hope we're not going to be. Other than that, I, I wanted to ask the City Manager about voucher, not voucher, Resolution 421, 428, and 429, those three resolutions. And also I want to ask him about, I didn't understand this resolution about Dunlowey Street, the alleyway. Are we giving it away or selling it or something? And the other thing I wanted to know, this 523,345.113, is that a quarterly payment for healthcare or is that a, how do we pay that? I know it's not a full payment. And, oh, the other thing I wanted to talk about too, 507th Avenue, we inquired today. They said if you want to have an A and B, you have to be a permanent homeowner and live there. Well, we know for a fact that nobody lives at 507th Avenue. Nobody lives there. There's no curtains on the windows, there's no shades, there's no nothing and nobody's there. Only occasionally people on the weekend are having a party. So you look at their driver's license and they use that as their permanent address, but they're not there. You have to do something better than that. That's not good enough, just looking at their driver's license. They don't live there. I mean, it might be their permanent address on their driver's license, but it's not good enough. And then you only examine the place once a year after they have all these parties in them? That's the other thing. That's got to be, and you've got to take care of that. That's a serious problem for us that live around it. We don't know who's there. We don't know, we see suitcases going in, suitcases going out. I mean, like, and we have to live next door to this. It's not fair. You've got to do better than that. So Resolution 421?
Resolution 421 is an insertion of item of revenue for the drunk driving enforcement grant. This is a grant that the city receives annually to conduct drunk driving enforcement. The resolution just puts it in the budget. It's the same thing as Resolution 422. It's, the mechanism is called Chapter 159 under the budget law that allows us to spend the money and put it in the budget. 428 is change order number two for the Springwood Avenue and Accademy Traffic and 429 is the resolution for change order number 20 for Black Rock Enterprises for the road program. Those are two change orders that end the project. This is the final quantities in, in the project to complete it.
It costs us money? Change orders usually do.
Oh, no, not always. Let me pull them up. I think one, I mean-
Take 428 decreases it by 24,000.
In the resolution, it states it, 427 increased it by $63,000, which is still underneath the legal threshold and, and as the mayor said, 428 actually decreased it. And the projects are now completed. And then that is a quarterly healthcare payment.
Are you trying to find another health plan?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. I mean, like, everybody's like, I'm even looking around for a new health plan and, and you're not when you're spending all this money on health.
The state health benefits plan that we're under is still the most affordable plan.
I don't care about the state.
Excuse me?
Yeah, you, you keep saying things like this, it's the state helping. There's other plans that are much better than that. They don't care about money on the state level. We do. I mean, like, we should be looking into a cheaper plan.
Rita, you didn't hear his last part of the sentence. The state health benefits plan is the most affordable plan out there. We could go to self-insured and we'd raise it another $10,000 per family. We've looked into it. The state health benefits plan is the best efficient and cheapest for the city. Yes, we do look into it.
And there was, there was no increase in share in healthcare?
A lot of money.
Okay, what do you mean? Dan Harris, Arizona Board Member.
You listen to Michael?
Dan Harris, Arizona Board Member, resident of 17 Ridge Avenue, life form member, proud member of the 18th and concerned citizen. Okay, a couple of things I wanted to, last night I was at a nice meeting of the Second Baptist Church and I just wanted to let you know that there are a lot of people in Asbury who do care about the gentrification of people in this city. There are also a lot of people who wonder why most of the activities that we have on the boardwalk, 99.5% white, okay? And that we ignore other people's cultures. If you aren't from a certain demographic group or you aren't from a certain way of life, most of your activities are basically kicked to the side. A lot of times we suggest things for Asbury and we say, well, we are a small city, but we are small enough to host a gay pride parade. We are small enough to host, what is that thing you have at Halloween where all the people- is that thing you have at Halloween where all the people run around? Yeah, that foolishness. But we are not large enough to host a Cinco de Mayo festival. We are not large enough to host a West Indian festival, which Philadelphia has, which New York has, and I think that it is short-sighted that we came to be this diverse city, this great diverse city, but under our auspices and under your leadership. We basically ignore the rest of the population of this city and of the state, just like you invite everybody else into the city to party, get drunk, throw up, urinate in the street. I'm quite sure we can find some respectable people from another way of life to bring into this city, okay? I think the city council should look into that. And next time you say you're diversified truly in your activities, not just on the west side, but truly in your activities on the beachfront, become totally diversified and open to other cultures. Also, this incident with my nephew was very eye-opening because it hurt, but one thing that was used against him was, well, and I'll say this because you're gonna find out anyway, your light is not the right light. But, my nephew received a light out here in the parking lot, which is distributed from the city. So, how can you use a light that the city gave to him to use to arrest him for a $15 ticket? That's the hypocrisy that exists in this town. And where our kids are being looked upon as criminals, because every time they say, what do you say? Then you hit them with a resisting arrest warrant. So, it's, okay, I'm gonna charge you with resisting arrest, now for a $15 ticket, I will attempt to ruin your life. It's not fair, and this Gestapo tactics in this city has to stop. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to close, please?
Move it.
Go on to minutes, we have three sets of minutes this evening. I'm sorry, four sets of minutes this evening. Executive session minutes on November 28, workshop minutes on November 28, dealer session minutes on November 28, and executive session minutes of December 4. Have a motion to adopt the minutes, please?
Move it.
Second. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Move on to consent agenda. Resolution 2018-413, setting the reorganization meeting for December, or for 2019, excuse me. 2018-414, resolution to terminate sewer account billing and council open charges for 612-670. 14, 2018-415, resolution approving disposition of surplus property with no value. 2018-416, resolution approving disposition of surplus property. 2018-417, resolution to support from the City of Asbury Park authorizing the Sustainable New Jersey Grant Application Roots to Rivers Reforestation Grant and Technical Assistant Program. Resolution 2018-418 has been moved to individual resolutions. 2018-419, resolution accepting drunk driving enforcement fund grant. 2018-420, resolution accepting justice assistance grant. 2018-421, resolution of the City of Asbury Park County, Mamas State, New Jersey, providing for the insertion of special revenue, item of revenue in the 2018 budget of the City of Asbury Park pursuant to NJSA 48, colon, 4-87, which is a Chapter 159. This is for the drunk driving enforcement grant. 2018-422, resolution of the City of Asbury Park County, Mamas State, New Jersey, providing for the insertion of special items of revenue in the 2018 budget of the City of Asbury Park pursuant to NJSA 48, colon, 4-87, Chapter 159, for the justice assistance grant. Have a motion to approve those resolutions, please?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Move on to individual resolutions. Resolutions 2018-418, an amended resolution accepting grant from the Hazardous Subcharge Site Remediation Fund Public Entity Program through New Jersey Economic Development Authority and the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. Have a motion to adopt this resolution, please?
Move it.
Second. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore? Resolution 2018-423, resolution authorizing a transfer of appropriations in fiscal years 2018 budget. Have a motion to approve, please?
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-424, resolution proving payment of bills. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2018-425, resolution authorizing the purchase of additional access control security system. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-426, authorizing credit and debit card acceptance for the City of Asbury Park Municipal Court payments. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-427, authorizing change order number two for the contract with Springwood Avenue sanitary sewer project.
Move the table.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore? Resolution 2018-428, authorized change order number two for the Springwood and Atkins Traffic Signals Upgrade Projects. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-429, resolution authoring change order number 20 with Black Rock Enterprises for Road Program. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-430, authorizing city manager to sign indemnification agreement. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Stay.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-431, resolution permitting a perimeter fence within a 15-foot wide access easement of tax map block 1245, blocks 1 through 9, and 13 through 21, as illustrated in Asbury Park Tax Map. Have a motion, please? Motion for 2018-431, please?
Move it.
Thank you. Have a second?
Move on.
So, I could, right now, I'm confused.
It dies for a lack of a second.
Move on to ordinances for introduction. First ordinance is ordinance 2018-54, ordinance of the City of Asbury Park amending and supplementing Chapter 7 of the Code of the City of Asbury Park Regarding Traffic and Parking Regulations. Have a motion to introduce, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for December 27. Ordinance 2018-55, an ordinance establishing salaries of employees of the Asbury Park Library. Have a motion to introduce, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for December 27. Ordinance 2018-56, locating an unnamed alleyway measuring 15 feet wide located east of Dunlue Street, Block 1801, as shown on the sheet of 18 of the official tax map of the City of Asbury Park. Have a motion to introduce, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
No.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for December 27. Ordinance 2018-57, bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of, payment of, the purchase of, price of real property and construction of firehouse by and in the City of Asbury Park and County, Mamas State, New Jersey, appropriating $3,500,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $3,500,000 bonds or notes of the City to finance the park's cost thereof. Have a motion to introduce, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to, this is second reading public hearing. Ordinance 2018-21, have a motion to table, please?
Motion to table.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordnance 2018-39, have a motion to table, please?
Move to table.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-50, I have withdrawn as 2018-57, replace that ordinance. 2018-51, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-36, Handicap Parking of the Code of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Have a motion to open this ordinance to the public, please?
Move it.
Second.
Motion to close.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion to adopt ordinance 2018-51, please?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-52, an ordinance establishing a restricted parking space for use of handicap persons at property located at 20 Dunlue Avenue in the City of Asbury Park, amending Chapter, supplementing Section 7-36 entitled Handicap Parking of Chapter 7 Traffic of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Have a motion to open this ordinance up to the public, please?
Move it.
Second.
Motion to close. Second.
Have a motion to adopt ordinance 2018-52.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-53, an ordinance amending Section 4-3.1 entitled Terms of Licenses in Section 4-9.6, Annual renewal of Chapters 4, general licensing of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Have a motion to open this ordinance up to the public, please?
Move it. Second.
Rita, question?
You gotta get the mic, Rita.
Yep. Cindy, you want to answer? Cindy, yours?
Yep. You want to know what this is for, Rita?
Yes.
This is basically making the mercantile licenses and the cafe licenses run concurrent terms. So, before, the cafe licenses never had a, when we, they had to renew by, now they have a certain date when they have to renew by and when late charges will be assessed. That's all it's doing. Yeah, easy. Motion to close?
Move it.
Second.
Can I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2018-53?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Yep, move it.
All in favor?